Welcome to the Hamilton County Commission meeting today, August 10th, 2023. We are very excited to be here in Sharonville, Ohio. We will start with the introductions of those who are on the dais.
Chrissy Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerold-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good evening, County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aludow, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese, and I have a big gavel, so don't even, don't even think about it, don't even think about it.
It's rough, man. It's rough.
We're excited to be here. We are going to start off, we always start off with a silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and so I just ask everyone to have a silent prayer at this time. Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we can't be in Sharonville without being officially welcomed. We don't go into different jurisdictions without that. And so, the mayor is not here tonight, but the city manager of Sharonville is here. Would you like to come up and officially welcome us to the beautiful city of Sharonville, Ohio?
Jim Lucas, City Administrator, City of Sharonville. Is this on?
I don't know, it's your house. How do you use it?
Yeah, it's on.
There we go.
So, welcome. You know, one of our biggest projects in our city right now is our convention center expansion, which you guys played a very key role with. So, as you leave the community, go on Chester Road and see what you're helping with. And that's targeted to be open about October, end of October. So, thank you for that. And really, that's the biggest thing happening. We have a lot of other smaller things happening in the community, but this is your show tonight, so I'll leave and welcome to the city of Sharonville.
Thank you very much. Thank you for hosting us. And we have been in Sharonville a lot in the last, I guess, month and a half. We had our first ever Small Business Day, and we had it here in Sharonville. The Sharonville Covicius Center was over 1,000 small businesses. Then all three of us were also at the announcement with the Go Metro service at Sharonville. And then I was also with you to do a ribbon cutting for a new beauty school, one of the few beauty schools in Hamilton County that opened up in Sharonville. So, doing a lot in Sharonville lately. And so, we're here today with a special meeting, and we have a special ceremony for our Women and Girls Commission. I'm going to turn it over to Commission Vice President Dreehouse, who is the founder of the Hamilton County Commission on Women and Girls.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, so, welcome, everyone. We're delighted to see you, we're glad to have you here. So, this is the official ceremony where we swear in the new members of the Commission on Women and Girls. As you probably know, there are 20 women and 10 girls that serve every year on the Commission on a rotating basis. And so, you, I believe, are the fifth cohort for the Commission on Women and Girls. So, welcome, and we're thrilled that you're here. Just to give a little context around this, the Commission on Women and Girls was started in 2017. I had just been elected and was the first woman elected to the Hamilton County Commission. And so, I had heard a lot out in the community about women and girls wanting to have their voices heard. And as you can see, things have changed here. I came in with Chris Monzella and Todd Portune, and look at us now. Here we are, ladies, right? So, a lot has changed since that time in 2017, but since then, the Commission on Women and Girls have launched so many really important initiatives, not only for Hamilton County, but for the broader community. Things like teaching about dating violence in schools. Women Helping Women are one of the partners that goes into schools and teaches importantly about domestic violence, dating violence. Well, that was an initiative to help expand the capacity from the county. That was an initiative of the Commission on Women and Girls. Another initiative was about our Pay Equity Series, where we have businesses, 40 every year, come to a common place and sign and say they want to participate in pay equity in their businesses. They're large, they're small. Think about the Cincinnati Reds, that big, the library system, and then very small companies that have five employees. And so, we also have launched a learning series for the companies that signed on and then said, "We want to be true to this. How do we accomplish this?" And so, we've got a learning series now with the Women's Fund that helps companies get to where they need to be when it comes to pay equity. And then finally, one of our biggest accomplishments this past year was passing some state legislation about period products, so making period products available in all public and chartered non-public schools in the state of Ohio, which was a huge lift and an initiative from the Commission on Women and Girls. And to lead by example, the county has put period products in all of our restrooms and all of our county buildings, and we're working on the stadiums. So, it's coming. So, anyway, thanks. But to the credit of the Commission on Women and Girls, because they are the ones that work these issues, they are the ones that come up with the ideas, and so they are the ones that really spur this activity. So, I just wanted to impress upon you that we're counting on you to come up with some great ideas this year, but it's really an important role, and we're thrilled to have you here, and thank you for accepting the challenge and being willing to volunteer your time to serve on the Commission. So, with that, I don't, I will be...
Before you go to that, there's some housekeeping I got so excited, forgot to do. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
So, I want to introduce Mary Mauney, but before that, I don't know if you and Commissioner Dumas have anything to say, or you want to go straight to Mary?
I'll open it up, Commissioner Dumas.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. This is just a great day in Sharonville. It's a great day to empower young women, old women. Women do great things, so I'm just happy to be part of it. Thank you.
Seasoned women is the word. But we are excited, and I just want to say that this Commission is not one, you get on a lot of, you know, people are on a lot of boards and so forth, and sometimes you feel like you're just meeting and nothing is happening, no one's listening to you. And Vice President Dreehouse outlined actionable steps. He'll meet Mary Mauney, because one of the things we did was hire someone who could really focus on these issues. And so, being on this Commission, your voices are heard, policies and changes are being made, and to me, that's what makes this Commission very special, because it's not like you're just wasting your time. You're actually impacting and making a lot of changes. So, just want to thank those who came before this Commission and encourage the new ones who will be joining this Commission that your work will be taken very seriously by this. So, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, I'm going to introduce Mary Mauney. Mary Mauney is really the Director of all things related to, that's her official title, to the Commission on Women and Girls. So, Mary, if you would come forward and if you would just say a few words, and then we're all going to come forward and call you up individually to get a certificate and pin from the Commission on Women and Girls.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you to all of you who have come today. Thank you to the friends and families who have come to support your loved ones and to support what is our future county. So, we're excited. I personally get such a fulfilling amount of joy out of not only managing this, but seeing the things that come to fruition as a result of your efforts. So, I thank you as well for allowing me to help you through this, and certainly to the rest of you for your commitment to this initiative as well. So, with no further ado, I will read the names of the members, and they will come up, and if the Commissioners will come down, I'll give you the items that we'll be presenting them with. So, each woman or girl will be receiving a pin, a certificate, and a copy of the resolution. Okay, so we're going to read the women's names first. And ladies, as you come up and get your certificate, please make sure the name in there is correct, and if not, we'll get you the right one afterwards, just so you know. So, please, first, please welcome Natasha Cowan. Congratulations. Please welcome Christian Davis. There we go. They already know. Please welcome Erin Elliott. I did, that is my fault, Commissioner, I know. Please welcome Anita Eschleman. And please welcome Moira Weir. We are now moving on to the young ladies who will be joining us. Okay, Samantha will get it to you. My apologies. She still gets to stand, yes. Sorry about that, Samantha. I know, yes. Lily Croll. I'm sorry, Lily is not here. Okay, I know. It's a lot of work, yes. And last, but certainly not least, please welcome Nora Zellin. Thank you all. Okay, go ahead and take a seat, and you can either stay for the rest of the meeting, or you can go outside and we can get more pictures out there.
One second, we have to vote on the resolution that you all have.
Yep.
So, it's in the record, so if you wanted to stay real quick for the vote, Vice President Dreehouse, do you have a resolution?
I do. We've got a resolution on our calendar, the 2023 Resolution Appointing Members to the Hamilton County Commission on Women and Girls. I move that we approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
Now, you're official.
It's in the records.
Thank you all, thank you all for being here.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you, parents, I see flowers being given. Thank you all. Thank you all so much for coming.
We have no speakers.
...leaving us for the most enjoyable part of the... Thank you, Mary, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. We'll move to public comments. Are there any public comments, Madam Clerk? Anyone on Zoom? No public comments. Now we'll start with the public comments from the Commission Board. Vice President Dreehouse, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't, I don't, I'm I'm very thrilled about the Commission on Women and Girls being signed in. So that's really my, my top comment. Just a couple of other things that I have interacted with since we've been together. I did take a tour of the Clover Nook Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired. And the reason I want to mention this, especially to my two colleagues, is that I toured the facility. They are doing great things for people who are visually impaired in our community. Not only serving them by way of their services with documents or magazines or books that are in Braille or can be listened to, but they also do business cards that are friendly to those that are visually impaired. So they're, they have Braille and they've got a QR code on them. And so as I was leaving, they gave me a set of Denise Dreehouse business cards. And I do believe that they've got two other sets at their offices. And so expect the call. I think your offices have received invitations to go out because they asked me if, if they should bring them. And I said, no, no, give them two, the one they come out, right? So I just want to put that on the radar, but I'm very grateful to them. They're really cool cards. And I've never seen anything quite like that with the QR code on it. So I was very grateful for the tour and they're doing, as I said, fantastic work out there. I also visited Cincinnati Works and learned about how they are working to put people to get people jobs who are in challenging circumstances in the community. There are a number of organizations in this space, but Cincinnati Works has really taken it to the next level. And there's not a lot of connectedness between them and what the county does. So I was delighted to meet with them and meet with some of the top folks in that organization. The one other thing is that I attended the One Ohio Meeting, I think it was yesterday, up in Columbus. And so this is the meeting about the foundation regarding the settlement dollars from the opioid settlement. And so we are still working through the common application. We are still working through the software. But the, the money will support, I, I hope, become available early spring. And so while we have allocated our direct money and folks have responded to RFPs and we are going to get those dollars out on the ground quickly. It is taking a little bit longer for the foundation dollars to roll through the state organization. But I continue to attend the meetings, represent Region Two, and so I will continue to fight that the vast majority of those dollars come down to the communities where the need is the most dire. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things. I attended the Asian American Coalition Internship Celebration. There are political interns who worked in different offices in Columbus. And it was a great occasion. They had eight graduates and I'm sure they're going to do great things in the future. And then there was a White House State and Local Briefing on Actions Regarding Housing Costs, How to Boost the Supply and Protect Renters. I attended the Jazz in the Park on, in Forest Park on this past Saturday. They received a small event grant and they just wanted to invite me and I appreciate it. It was a great event. And I was able to say a few words as it relates to the Commission and the Board and what we're doing. As you know, the zoo levy came before us on Tuesday. Whether or not we, as a board or as individual commissioners, would approve an increase, and I did not approve it. The Board did not approve a, a increase for the zoo levy. And I just wanted those who did not know about it to, to let them know what the outcome was. And then this morning I had a meeting with the SOARWID Board of Directors, which is a workforce council for the county and the region. And they do great, great work, continue to do great work. Their president or the director, Jason Ashbrook, will be leaving to go to another venture, but I thank him for all that he's done. And then a little bit later on, I had a virtual conversation with the YMCA President, CEO Raquel Howard Smith, who just started in February and she is doing fantastic innovative things. And she wants to partner even more with the Commission. So I'm just really happy about them having her over there. And then the Rise Initiative, which I had brought to the Board, Reentry into Society and Employment, which is going to work with the reentry department that we have here. You'll be hearing more from Trina Jackson and myself as it relates to trying to get this initiative going. It's, it'll be similar to the Marysville Prison Initiative, but I'm really excited about that coming about. And then right before I came, I had a webinar with the White House, an intergovernmental briefing. And they talked about many, many things. It's only a half an hour, but they have a, a lot of people to get a lot in in 30 minutes. And specifically on August the 8th, there was a bill that Joe Biden signed as it relates to wages for construction workers. It was a Davis Bacon Rule that we all know about, where we want everyone to receive the prevailing wage. And that prevailing wage. He's pointing to me. Back on, thanks. And the prevailing wages, we know, as we go and have different construction projects, sometimes it doesn't happen. And it has not, that rule has not been updated in over 40 years. So that rule was updated, which will be good for, for everyone working in construction and just the surrounding other divisions too. Because as we have more projects coming forward, we know that with this new rule, people will be able to get the wages that they certainly deserve. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have a couple of things, because I was out of town for the last meeting that we had. And so I do have a couple of things. One, I, I thank, thank you for bringing up, because we had a special meeting on Monday. And most people, we don't meet on Monday, so you may not was able to tune in on that. But we did have the responsibility of voting on the level of the levy or whether or not there should be a levy. And we had a, a public hearings and looked over the information. And it was a unanimous vote of this Board to put a levy on that does not include a, an increase. And so I certainly believe that was the right thing to do. And that's what the voters will now, it's in your hands as it relates to that particular issue. We, it's a very tough time right now for a lot of people. And we had reports that came in from the consultant that said that the zoo was in a good position. And without an increase, will continue to be in a very good position. So that happened on, on Monday. So thanks for bringing that up. Also want to say that I want to thank everyone that came out and voted in a special election. This is tough to come out for an election that's held during, with, you know, some are saying back to school time, vacation time, and not a typical time of an election. But I want to thank everyone that came out. We had a very good turnout for it to be a special election. And Hamilton County came out and Hamilton County did the right thing and Ohio did the right thing as it relates to the defeat of Issue One. As someone who has worked on a constitutional amendment for voting rights, it is already very, very tough. I was able to get 100,000 signatures and still we didn't make the ballot in time. So to make it even tougher was not the right way to go and the voters spoke. And so I'm very happy they spoke the way that they did on a no that happened on Tuesday. And the whole country was watching Ohio. I also want to thank our Hamilton County Board of Elections because they had to put together a good election. Once again, we had a very seamless voting system, early voting. People could get in and get out. We have a very good early vote location in terms of how we run our operations. And thanks to all the poll workers that worked on Election Day. Because I know that was really tough for the Board of Elections to get the workers to be able to work on a special election. In addition to that, I had a meeting in this week with our engineer, Eric Beck. I asked him to join me. And Greg Pansiero, who is the owner of Trios and a number of other businesses in Kenwood. And they have some concerns with the, with the township there. Township has some concerns about safety, Trio, traffic safety. Trios, who's been there as a small business, also has concerns about any changes affecting their businesses that are there. They have several businesses that's in their mall and was able to get a better understanding. Brought it to the attention of Mr. Aludo. And I believe my colleagues who also, we can't meet together, but they will be meeting individually with Mr. Pansiero. And I just wanted to say, we want to make sure that we have a safe traffic pattern. But at the same time, we do have a policy that was put in last year when we designed the first ever Office of Small Business. We put a lot of money in small businesses, restaurants during COVID, trying to keep them afloat. So I hope that, he seems to have something that could be a win-win. I'm hoping it can become a win-win for both the township, on the traffic pattern over there by Kenwood Mall, but also at a point where they don't put Trios, who's been a restaurant for many, many years, out of business. So I'm hopeful that they're able to work this out and come with something that is a win-win for everyone. In addition, I was with the 513 Relief Bus for the back to school at Northgate this week. They were at the back to school fair at Northgate Mall. And then I was with them today in Dale High. These stories of people that were helping by having a 513 Relief Bus, which is basically Hamilton County on wheels. Every, it's like we're out here in Sharonville. Everybody just can't come downtown. And so this 513 Relief Bus, which has helped already over 4,000 people, and Talbot House told me they've helped 600 people already just this year with a number of services from the 513 Relief Bus. But I want to share one lady's testimony. She came up to Northgate Mall, a Caucasian woman, mid-aged. And she said, I was coming to the bus just to thank the workers. Because she had been diagnosed with cancer. And she had never had to ask the government for help in her life and she prides herself by that. But she had to go through these procedures and all of these things. And she had to make sure that her bills would be covered. And she came to the bus and she said, everyone treated her with dignity and respect. And she really appreciated because she was so nervous to ask for help. She said she got the help, but she was just coming back to tell them thank you. And I told her, well, we'll be praying for you with your cancer. And she said, I'm here to tell you that I had the surgery and they got it. They got it out. And being her, I mean, I wanted to bust into tears. But it's those kinds of stories and things that are happening with this 513 Relief Bus. And I want to give Trevina and her team and our driver, everyone involved, because they call it a no judgment zone. And I want to thank all of them who are involved. So they were in Dale High today. The Public Defender's Office was partnering with us. And I, I was told that they've had lines of people that come in to learn about expungement and different things. And they're meeting a lot of different people that they would have never met had they not been able to reach out with the 513 Relief Bus. So I'm super, super excited about that. And then lastly, I did, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I wasn't able to, to say this. But I want to thank everyone involved with the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. It is incredible. I thank my colleagues, as I've said, who voted for us to move forward. I want to thank Mr. Aludo, the administration, Mr. Beck, many back and forth conversations to try to get us to the finish line, to have a project this complex be able to be done in this record amount of time is unbelievable. It has put us on the national and international stage as it relates to the newest tourist attraction in the whole state of Ohio. And not having anything like this, celebrating music in this way with this type of technology in the country. I want to thank over 5,000 people that attended the historic grand opening. And we had another thousand that were on the lawn that couldn't get in because Fire Marshal said we were over, we were close to over capacity. But I appreciate them watching it. It was remarkable. And I want to also thank all those who were involved, 155 workers and jobs that we created with construction on this project. So the construction, the design team, the technology team, the production team, the public and the private. The private of P&amp;G led by P&amp;G and Krogers. And our partners who came in to help us promote Sorda and the Cincinnati Northern Kentucky Airport with a special display over there. The library, Radio One Cincinnati, and so, so many more. It's a 5,000-piece jigsaw puzzle. And every piece mattered to put this 5,000-piece jigsaw puzzle together. I want to remind people that it is free. It is open. Our hours are 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. If you went in the daytime, you need to go in the nighttime. There's a special light show at 9:00 PM and 10:00 PM. And one of the people that's featured in the video for the night show is the Q Kids. And I want to, from the West End Dance Team. And I want to acknowledge them because they just won the national dance competition. And so just so excited for them to be a part of it. And I thank everybody who wore white. I really appreciate it. Some people say, I've never wore all white before, but you look so beautiful, so marvelous. And it was streamed also on the National Black Star Network. So we were actually on a network that it was on. A couple of things from what it also brought to us in terms of attention, publicity. According to Anastasia and Experience Cincinnati, we have had 1 million impressions from earned media. We've been in Billboard Magazine, Vibe Magazine, and Vibe had 1 million hits for our story. We also are very excited. We were in Black Enterprise, but I'm also excited we are in Planet Attraction. J.R.A., who is one of the designers who does a lot of work with amusement parks. This is where, like all the amusement parks, this is where the Disney World executives, they look at this magazine. And we made it, Planet Attraction, that just came out. So I'm super, super excited about all of the great publicity that we have. So very excited. We have 12 inductees now. And I just encourage everyone to go down there. The entire family can go down and have a great time and be a part of learning and being entertained at the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. So wanted to say that, and I think I made sure I hit everybody. Oh, yes, and Radio One Cincinnati. And I want to thank Lincoln Ware, chairing the, the selection committee. And I think we made some really good selections they have. I mean, to have, you know, James Brown and Felipe Wynn. And to have Dr. Charles Fold, to have Bootsy Collins. We just got a major hit, the only place in the country where you could see Bootsy and Catfish playing together in the augmented reality. Also, we have The Deal, Midnight Star, Louise Sharpshire. I think I hit everybody. A Penny Ford. How could I forget Penny Ford? So go down there, enjoy. It's a lot of fun. And just thank everybody that was involved. I think we're up for a couple of awards. I understand, Mr. Aludo, that landscaping, we're up for a landscaping award. We're also up for some other awards that Messer and others are putting forward. I want to thank Messer. And I want to really shout out Kyle. Big shout out to Kyle, the project manager for Messer. Everyone kept saying, are we going to make it? And I said, Kyle, are we going to make it? He said, we have never had a project that has not finished on time. We will make it. So I want to give him a big shout out as well. So that's all I have. Oh, no, I don't. That is not all I have. The Urban League of Southwest Ohio, big shout outs to them. I was at the ribbon cutting yesterday of the Holloman Center for Social Justice. And it's located in the Avondale Town Center. And I want to give a shout out to Kristy Coons, the CEO. The former CEO, Eddie Cohen, that kind of began it, began this journey. And then Kristy Coons, who was on the journey and she was at UC Health. And for her now to be there for the ribbon cutting. and she was at UC Health. And for her now to be there for the ribbon cutting, and Eddie Cohen was there, Donna Jones Baker was there. It was just a tremendous thing. And a shout out to the Holloman family for putting up $1 million for the Social Justice Center. They said they're going to be dealing with voting rights, civil rights, police procedures. And I want to give a big shout out to Raquel Howard Smith, who was the original executive director, and to the new executive director, who was one of my mentees, and I'm super proud of him. He was with Ohio Justice and Policy Center, and now he's the new executive director. And so I'm very, very proud of of him as well. So that is all that I all have. Now we will go to the calendar. Oh, no, we will go to Mr. Aludo.
Well, I think just a couple of quick by leaves, commissioners, just a couple of comments. Number one, just although he previously spoke up here, just want to acknowledge my colleague, Jim Lucas, administrator, that does a fantastic job up here in Sharonville. So just want to thank him for all of his work and in partnership. He mentioned the Sharonville Convention Center project, which the county is heavily involved with. We're also working on a routine basis with Sharonville, whether it's community development block grants, road work with the county engineer, recycling grants. I think we have a small event grant that we're funding this year with Sharonville. We've got a community revitalization grant, I think for 50,000 that we're working on with them as well. So a lot of stuff. Madam President, as you indicated earlier, a lot of stuff going on in Sharonville, a lot of county interaction there as well. So that completes my comments. I do have one by leave item today, you know, just if the board would entertain me, and then we can go into, I think we don't, the only regular agenda item we had was the Women and Girls Commission. So we've got the consent agenda after that. The first by leave or the only by leave item, though, commissioners, is the Budget Adjustment 21. This is a transfer of appropriations in one of our state grants and a court reporter and also funding a court reporter's recording system in municipal court. The state grant specifically is to help with many of our addiction response efforts that was put into the Health and Hospitalization Fund back in 2018. This just, I think it expires in September, so this just makes some last minute transfers so we can get some supplies purchased.
Okay. I'll open it up. Vice President Treehouse, any questions? Commissioner Dumas, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
One thing I wanted to, I didn't say his name. The executive director is Gabriel Fletcher. Gabriel Fletcher, I'm sorry. Mr. Aludo, I know in our Monday meeting, you introduced your new deputy. Do you want to, since it's a regular meeting?
Introduce him again?
Yeah.
Yeah, happy to.
In case people, that was our Monday crowd. We got to now have our Thursday viewing.
Took my glasses off. Okay, he didn't sneak out. So all right, good. So yeah, just take this time to introduce Mr. Anson Turley, who's Deputy Assistant Administrator in our office now, going to be working on a lot of special projects, a lot of government affairs work, a lot of stuff, as the board knows, there's just a whole heck of a lot of stuff going on in the administration from whether it's the gun range project, government affairs, some grants that we just have received, some interactions with the city of Cincinnati that Anson is going to be picking up the ball for us on. Comes with a wealth of experience, most recently village manager over at Woodlawn, former Assistant Chief of Cincinnati Fire Department, former emergency manager with the city of Cincinnati. So he also knows a little bit how to navigate city systems, which is always something that is helpful to us at the county. So I just want to thank Anson and welcome him formally and officially to the team.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Welcome to the official meeting. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Aludo, you going to the consent agenda?
Yes, happy to, as I realize that my text just took down everything I just said about Anson. So I'll forward it to Anson. So you've got, you've got that. Yes, go to the consent agenda now, commissioners. So item number two on your, I'm just going to walk through these very briefly for those who may be watching at home. We just try to highlight the major issues on the consent agenda, just for transparency's sake. Item number two is a grant agreement with the city of Madeira for 300,000. This is a community revitalization grant related to their Miami Avenue Revitalization Project. We have another budget adjustment grant appropriation in probation, in the probation department, also a grant appropriation in planning and development, total of $630,000. We have an agreement with Public Financial Management. They're the county's financial advisor. This is a five-year term of their agreement. We have Resolution Number 34. This is filing the annual information statement for the year of 2022. This is to fulfill our obligations to bondholders of county debt and a filing with the Municipal Security Rulemaking Board. Resolution Number 35 is item number six on your agenda. This is the issuance and sale of sewer system tax assessment, general obligation bonds. This is the the bonds that we sell to fund the work that is then assessed for various assessment projects done through the Metropolitan Sewer District. We have the actions that the county administrator has taken for the month of May. Item number eight on your agenda is an agreement at Juvenile Court for Airmark Correctional Services. This is for food service at the Juvenile Justice Center. This was rebid, as the board heard from Juvenile Court several months ago in order to enhance the the food offerings from a dietary perspective out of the Juvenile Youth Center. This is an award to Airmark in the amount of 683,000. Their item number nine is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Flock Safety Group. This is for the purchase of Flock cameras. 25 of these are for the sheriff. They got a grant to initially purchase these. These are, this is the license agreement extension. There is also a portion of this funding, about 69,000 or 70,000 is the sheriff is purchasing them, but therefore installation in Anderson and Sims Township to be reimbursed by those townships. We have item number 10, which is the purchase of one Ford Bronco for $36,595 for the Hamilton County Engineer. And then I'll take a deep breath because we have a lot of JFS items. We have an $800,000 contract with Lighthouse Youth Services for crisis stabilization purposes. We have a $400,000 contract. This is Amendment Number One with Changing the World for Independent Living Services, a $20,000 agreement renewal with Interim Healthcare of Cincinnati, Ohio for nursing services. We have a agreement for $201,564 with Mentor, Inc. for foster care services. Item number 15 is an agreement with Choices, Inc., $49,999 for independent living services. We have a an amendment to an agreement with the Indiana Development Developmental Training Center of Lafayette LLC for residential treatment services. That's at $1.3 million. We have a renewal of a contract with Abraxis for residential treatment services, $300,000. We have a second renewal and amendment with Eastern Corporation, $165,000 for residential treatment services. We have a second renewal and amendment with the Village Network for $275,000 for residential treatment services. We have a renewal and amendment, a second renewal and amendment with Carrington Youth for residential treatment services, $200,000. Second renewal and amendment with RTC Resource Acquisition Corporation for $110,000 for residential treatment services. We have a second renewal and amendment with SJO Kids for $900,000 for residential treatment services. We have a an agreement, an amendment with Lighthouse Youth Services at $600,000 for independent living services. And we have a single source agreement with Beach Acres for $53,000 for foster care services. Finally, we have a item number 25 on your agenda is a resolution approving the zoning map amendment. This is for Green Case 2023-03. This is the Sky Ridge Apartments, major revision that the board heard a hearing about a couple of weeks back. We've got the sheriff reporting to no objection to five liquor licenses. And that is the consent agenda, commissioners. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. I'll open it up for any questions on the consent agenda, Vice President.
No questions.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple items. Item number eight, and I've spoken to our administrator about this Airmark. It's a huge contract, $683,000. And I can remember almost when I first came in into office that with that contract being so large, is there any way we can subcontract for those smaller vendors that provide food services? I know there are certain criteria that they would have to meet. But I just, I just think that Airmark is all over the county, everywhere you can think of. And Jeff said he was going to look into whether or not those smaller entities can meet the standards that is to take place with the Juvenile Court. But I certainly want to look into that. I brought that up again as we looked at janitorial services. And that contract is huge, too. And I think, Madam Chair, you brought up, I think that's how we ended up getting a vending machine with someone different, just for a vending machine, which is great. We tried a new vendor for that. But I think we need to purposely look at trying to subcontract these big items out because those smaller businesses, we're saying we're proponents of small business, then let's continue to do what we can do as a county to make that happen. And lastly, the JFS items that were brought up, there were many of them, as we said, I counted about 14 items with different services for our young people. And I'm just really glad to see that we're doing what we need to do through the levy. My priority, of course, and I've said it before, is that if we can leave them at home, great. If we can leave them in their home or local, but I know oftentimes that can't happen. But I'm just really glad that we're meeting the needs of our children in this county. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I'll just echo what you said about item number eight. I do think that's something that we can look at. I know we talked about menu options, but there are other potentials that may not even know that they can do business with us because certain entities automatically have been getting things. And so they may not be a part of it. I know that we're trying to get more people to join the different list. So I would ask Mr. Aludo, if Greg Forte, our Office of Small Business Director, and Mr. Robert Bell, I know he was here earlier, because I know there's a company, I don't know if they could do this, but they've been doing, seemed like they would have capacity. They had me come and tour. They're in Arlington Heights, and they do a lot of similar food services. But they said they have to do it outside of, a lot of it outside of Hamilton County. They may not even know that it's a possibility. So I just would put an asterisk note there too as well, to see if we can be a little more intentional outreach and then see if there's something. There may not be anything, but at least we took a great look because Airmark is a major company. They get a lot of these things. And sometimes the food is not as, their service is not as great. So I would, I would concur with that and other things as well.
And, Madam President, I'm happy to follow up on it some more. I do know that as a qualification of the bid, that Airmark did have to reach out to multiple small vendors. They got one response from, I think Klosterman was the only local entity that that came back and said they could provide the services that that Airmark was looking for under the contract. But I can't be 100% certain that the meant, that the businesses that you mentioned were specifically on the list that they reached out to. So I'll certainly follow up on that, talk to Mr. Bell, Mr. Forte, and see if we can do some more grooming of that environment to make sure the next time this contract goes out, that when they reach out, whoever wins the bid, when they reach out, that they have, that we know that we're hitting the entire, we're casting the net wide enough to pull in everyone we want to.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Yeah, Madam Chair. As you said, we can look at it later. And that's okay with me. But we have, as we look at the contract, I was reading that the contractor shall neither assign nor transfer this contract in part or entirety to any other subcontract without prior approval of the youth center superintendent. So we may not be able to do anything now, but we certainly can look at that contract and see how we can change some things around because it doesn't even allow Airmark to even think about using anybody else.
Yeah. And, Madam President, Madam Commissioner, I think, as you said, they they would have to get the approval. So I think if there, if there is someone they found, and it worked for the court, and the court was satisfied with the menu options provided in that particular situation, I think they could still do it. But they would just need to approve it. They could, I think the purpose of that term is just so they don't go out and do it, and there's a quality issue at the end of the day because they weren't approved. But we'll, I'll follow up on that directly.
Yeah. And I think the way we're writing these contracts, I know it's the court, I don't know if they work with our procurement, they got their own procurement. But we need to work on the language because I remember years ago, Airmark had Convention Center when I was on council. And they had it in their contract. If you went out and got a sub or something, it was more expensive. They had a little clause in there that cost you this much if you wanted fried chicken or collard greens or something like that. And so that's why we didn't go with them again. You know, we said, you're out. And we went with a company that was, you know, willing to be more inclusive. And they end up being more. They started, they tasted Julia's, they even paid her for some of her recipes. And now she's in not only Convention Center in Cincinnati, but also Sharonville. She's in our Sharonville Convention Center as a small minority-owned business. And because of the contract. So Airmark gets a little tricky. They say, oh, yeah, you could do that. And then they want to charge you $10,000 more, $15,000 more, because they really don't, they're not open to fostering those kind of things. So just want to make sure our procurement folks, when they're looking at the contracts or drafting them, that, you know, I can't do nothing now, but as they're drafting in the future, I think Mr. Dumas raised a good point. We got to look at what is the language that we're putting in these contracts. Because some things, they'll say, oh, we tried, but it'll cost you $20,000 more if you want this person in. And of course, you're going to say, no, because we're trying to keep the cost down on the taxpayers. So I just wanted to bring that up when you would, when you're looking at that as well. Any other questions, Commissioner Dumas?
No, I have nothing.
Vice President, anything? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
I have one other item I forgot to say. Mr. Aludo, in your report, I want to thank you. You had a report from what happened during the Music Fest weekend that included Black Tech Week and Black Music Walk of Fame. And you reported that hotel revenue was up from 2019 numbers. We were at $6.9 million. Let me say it one more time. $6.9 million in revenue. Our budget director is here. He's got his pen and his calculator ready to go. But $6.9 million in hotel revenue that came in that weekend. So that was a big weekend in terms of just the hotel. We haven't even got into the sales tax and the other stuff that came in during that weekend. That usually brings in $100 million in economic impact with the other residuals. So I thought that was pretty good, good news to report. All right. Anything else, Vice President Treehouse? You had a great day with the Women and Girls. Commissioner Dumas, anything?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. No further business. I got this big, we are adjourned.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.